With the public hearing on the 2014-15 district-wide safety plan. Seeing no one from the public present at the meeting, I will assume that there is no public comment. Is there any comment from the board?
Wait, hold on.
No? None? Okay, having no further here, I'd like to close the public hearing portion of the meeting and turn over the meeting to Elaine Cardia.
Can we wait a few minutes? I mean, this is why we have to be in such a rush for this. This is up, you know. Give Robin a few minutes to show up.
Well, no, she's just going to do the elect-- my oath. We're not going to go through the--
But still.
Robin called the meeting.
Yeah, we can pause when we get to five, John. I mean--
Can we pause now?
For my oath?
We have our pledge of allegiance. Oh, wait. No, no, no. I'd like to call the 2014-15 Irvington School District Reorganization meeting to order, and if we can say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's still home. Her alarm didn't go off.
She's what?
She's still home. Her alarm did not go off.
Correct.
Okay, and I'd like to welcome once again Mr. Phil Whitney as trustee of the Board of Education for the next three years. And if you'll repeat after me, I--
I.
Phil Whitney--
Phil Whitney.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States--
Will support--
Support.
The Constitution of the United States--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will fully discharge the duties--
And I will fully discharge the duties--
Of Board of Trustee--
Of--
Trustee of the Board of Education.
As trustee of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome once again.
No, so help me God.
Okay, and you're going to sign right there. Okay. So are we going to wait a little bit?
She's still at home.
She's still home, so she's-- we probably should go.
Okay.
She didn't indicate she was about to--
No, she said she's hurrying up and getting ready.
Okay, so I don't think-- unless anybody else--
No, I think we should go.
Okay, so then the next agenda item. If I have it in front of me.
There you go.
Is we'll accept the agenda for the reorganization and special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero.
And the next item on the agenda is nomination of board officers. May I have a motion to-- for the position of board president for the 14-15 school year?
I'd like to nominate Phil Whitney.
May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for president? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Whitney? Four zero, Mr. Whitney is our new president. Congratulations, and I'm turning the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Could that have happened fast enough?
You know, I've been waiting for this day for some time. Yeah, well. That's right. Exactly.
Even though it's empty.
Alrighty.
Just need the rest of my breakfast, thank you.
Welcome, everyone.
Actually, that's the president's breakfast.
The pres-- sorry, Phil.
So I'd like to move along with our agenda. We have the nomination for the election of vice president. Can I have a motion to nominate the vice president for the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Maria Kashkin.
Seconded. All in-- all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For myself?
Yes.
Did you tell me second?
No. I did. Did we have a four oh again? I didn't hear you, John, I'm sorry.
I-- I'm just not voting on these things. I'm not voting on-- I haven't voted yes on either of them. You guys decided among yourself this is what it would be, and so be it. Obviously, we weren't--
Okay, so did you vote, Maria? I didn't hear you say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have a three oh and an abstention.
If you guys want to conduct the board, that's fine, but it's-- don't assume that it's a unanimous board.
John, there's a time for comments at the end, so why don't we just keep moving along? Because you can--
Why not? Okay.
Oh, just we have--
Let's do that.
Okay?
John's nice to me.
Alrighty, so do you want to move over here, vice president?
Sure.
So there's nothing really for 5.3, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, for the committee and liaison appointments, 6.1, I'm going to suggest that we table that for the moment, because no discussions have been had as to what committee assignments should be. Same thing with liaison appointments. I would however say that to the extent that the board-- board members need any kind of intelligence or advice from existing committee members, that they should seek that from policy members as-- until we have our next board meeting on July 20th, 27th, I think it is.
Twenty--
Yeah.
Phil, can I just-- one other thing on this. The Finance Committee, to my knowledge, which I was part of, didn't meet in any sense, in any form, in the last year. So we ought to also put on the agenda whatever we feel is to whether we want to do that or what its purpose should be.
All right. I believe the committees are-- some of them are required, and therefore, they're not at my discretion as the board president and other of-- other committees are not required. So we can certainly talk about whether we want to have a Finance Committee, although I think that is-- that's one that is required.
Required by state law?
Right.
Or is it on or not?
Right, did we as a-- we as a-- it's a committee of the whole, isn't it? Because we need--
That's the audit.
That's the audit committee, okay.
Then we ought to think about what its function is.
Right. Yeah.
If it's required by law, are they required to meet once a year? What are the requirements?
We'll look into it and we'll bring it back to the agenda.
What does that-- what is that committee required to do, if anything?
All right, so same with liaison appointments, I suggest we just table that till our next So now we are into the appointment of our district clerk, 7.1. Can I have a motion to appoint Elaine Cardia as our district clerk from July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015, at the annual stipend of $13,795?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's four, nothing?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Elaine Cardia.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States--
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk of Irvington School District.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk of the Irvington--
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Okay. So did you swear in Maria?
Did not swear in Maria, no. Oh, my goodness.
And you as president?
That happened. She did that with--
You were sworn in as trustee.
That's true.
Trustee, yes.
All right, back up.
Or bad.
Rewind.
Okay.
So we just do you first?
I'll do you first.
Okay.
I, Phil Whitney--
I, Phil Whitney.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties--
And I will faithfully discharge the duties--
Of president of the Board of Education.
And president of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Oh, okay. Here you go. And then everybody can sign the book. And then Phil will swear to you.
Aye. I, Maria Kashkin.
I, Maria Kashkin.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States--
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Irvington Board of Education.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
Of the-- according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to 7.2. We have the appointment of the other district officers.
So moved.
And I have a motion to appoint the following district officers. Debbie Centafani, Jackie Mackin, Ms. Beverly Miller as records management officer, purchasing agent, and records access officer, and then Debbie Centafani again as deputy district clerk. Can I have a motion to approve those appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes for nothing. All right, now we're on to our consent agenda. And I would like to have a motion to-- well, first of all, let me ask, does anyone want to take out the policies for discussion? We have-- in section 12, we have two-- three policies which represent second reads, and therefore, we're adopting them today. And then we have three policies which are-- pardon me, one, two, three, yes, three policies that are first reads, and I thought maybe somebody might want to discuss those, so we could pull them out of the consent agenda. Otherwise, we'll accept everything as a whole.
I want to take a-- well, of the ones I think that are up for adoption--
Yeah.
--I want to take out the school district records, 12-1, I think it was, well, is it still 12-1?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Yeah, so you can take that out?
And, well--
We can take them all out and approve them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't-- yeah, I don't have anything to say on the other two policies.
Okay.
It's fine to take them out, probably easier to take them out.
Okay.
The others, they're not-- they're not in the consent agenda anyway, because we're not approving them.
They're just first reads.
You can't have first reads in the consent.
Ah, good point. That's right.
And I do want to talk about those too.
Okay.
Are you asking more generally about things they got?
Yes, this would be the time to take things out if there are some things in the--
Also--
Write this down.
Um, a couple of other things. Also, the last five sort of conduct. Have you had some questions about that? Possibly. Depending on the answer, some questions may have--
Mm-hmm.
And 12-7, the June 3 minutes. One other thing I want to check. On agenda, obviously. Yeah, I guess that's it.
Okay.
I had another note, but to myself, but I can't understand what I-- oh, no, can we also talk about 15-5, Athletic Trainer Services, RFP?
Is that it? Okay, so I'd like to have a motion to accept the consent agenda items that consist of 9.1 through 11.7, and then also including 12.8. Oh, I have to omit 11.5 from that, so it'd be-- sorry, I'll start again. 9.1 through 11.4, excluding 11.5, and then 11.6, 11.7, and 12.8 through-- where was that?
15.4.
15.4, no, but didn't we have to exclude the appointment of the athletic?
Our 15.5.
That's my friend.
15.5, so, yeah, 15.4, exactly. And then including again 15.6, 15.7, 15.8. That represents our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four, nothing. All right, now, back to taking these in order. 11.5, right, John, Code of Conduct?
Yeah. Okay. I-- it just was not clear to me, we weren't really-- I don't think we were told how that all this has changed.
There are no content changes to it whatsoever. If there were any changes of substance, we'd have a public hearing. The only change that occurred was, it was identified last year that on page four, I believe it is, under the Statement of Philosophy, Section 1, well, it was incorrectly titled. It said, "Bill of Student Rights and Responsibilities." It just said, "Bill of Student Rights." So we counsel, reviewed it, checked the proper titling, and made sure there was an appropriate cross-reference of the policy. And based upon just a correction, they said that we would just adopt it, as opposed to the need of having a hearing again. But the rest of the content--
It's a change of the title.
Just the title.
Right, what was redlined?
No content is changed.
So no substance.
No substance.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know whether I was supposed to look at the red lines.
Okay, then, to approve it?
I just wanted to know that.
All right.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to approve 11.5, our 2014-15 Code of Conduct?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four, nothing, Elaine? Okay, now we're moving on to our three policies of adoption.
Can I--
You can take them one at a time.
I have a different copy of those that don't have the electronic--
All right. So we're now talking about the adoption of a new policy, school district records, 12.1. John?
Yeah, I'm still-- I appreciate that the first paragraph of this was changed. I still find it odd, unless it's legally required, that we have in a policy that it's the-- our policy to comply with the law. We need to have policies stating that we comply with the law? That's essentially what the first paragraph of this reads.
It is. It's a required policy.
I would hope it was--
That our policy is to comply with the law. It's a required policy for the school district. We're required to have a policy because of the law, so--
But does it require that-- well, it doesn't hurt us to do this, it's just odd-- seems like an odd wording to me. Do we normally put in policies that we plan to--
We often do.
It is in some place, it is true, yes.
Okay, fine, I mean, that's fine, if everybody else is fine with it, it's--
Robin, we're-- to catch you up, obviously, I'm the president, Maria is the vice president, I'm sorry about that. And, well, I'm not sorry about that, but I'm sorry you weren't here for that. And we are-- we've gone through, we've nominated Elaine again, a few other people, and we're now talking about the policies.
Okay, thanks.
Would have waited, except fortunately, I have a meeting waiting for me at work at some point this morning. And others probably have meetings, too. So we're on 12.1, the school district record policy. And John was asking about why we need a sentence that says we're going to comply with the Freedom of Information law of the State of New York. I mean, I think, John, if it doesn't-- if it doesn't affect the district negatively, it's kind of restating the obvious, so it's not necessarily a bad thing.
No, it's not a bad thing. You know, I think it's unfortunate that we need to, you know, state the obvious, you know, state things that are already true, and so that's fine.
But it also--
It doesn't bother--
I suppose on the one hand, it is clear in saying that the guiding-- the guiding principle of this document is the Freedom of Information law. That's what it does, is it grounds our policy--
Yeah, although it actually says what you just said. Anyway, it's-- I think it's in our fully worded, but I don't think it's an issue.
So it's acceptable to you, then, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so--
It's acceptable, but I have no issue with that.
Can I have a motion to approve the policy on school district records?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you vote, Robin, I do?
Yeah.
Aye.
Yeah, okay, five oh. Yes. And now we're moving on to our second policy for consideration, smoking and other tobacco. Any comments on that, or you adopt that? Nope? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the policy on smoking and other tobacco use on school premises?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our third policy on impartial hearing officer appointment. Any comments? Nope? Sorry, I'm a little slow here, because my board docs is spinning away here. I can't actually read it.
What goes?
That's harder, easier.
It's all paper.
This is what paper looks like.
Yeah, I can just--
So can I have a motion to approve the policy on impartial hearing-- appointment of the impartial hearing officer and compensation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. So we're on to our first reads, which I'm corrected in saying that they don't require any motion, but we certainly can have comments on the first read of the policies. And just for context, the plan is to have the second read on our August 19 board meeting, so we have a good chunk of time to talk about it, including our next board meeting on July 27th. But certainly, we can talk about it now. So in the first-- the first policy is on the acceptable use policy for technology. Comments myself.
Do you want to do these comments in a particular order?
Yeah, well, John, why don't you start?
Well, I'm happy to. All right, so, Phil, first of all, it's an overarching question on what you just Doing the entire policy consideration in the summer, obviously, then it's the, you know, the transparency to the community, is there a strong reason we need to have the second read in the middle of August? I mean, I can't think of at least a less transparent time than the middle of August for a second read.
These policies, yes, John, the policies have been worked on throughout the spring with district staff, went before the policy committee, which reviewed and contributed to what you see before you. We believe that there's value in having the policies in place as we prepare for the school year, because it helps to inform our planning over the summer months, and especially when we're speaking to the policies of consideration that are listed here, two related to technology and one related to field trips. These policies have the ability to change practice and protocols, and we think there's value in having it done, having them in place before school starts.
Okay, well, let me address that as we go along. Okay, so on the computer use-- You know, I didn't know, first of all, how much time we would have today either, because it indicated to me that we were going to be in a rush today, and we got this email that Chris--
Right.
So I did share.
That's all right. We can still talk about it in our next board meeting.
Yeah, I would say, my impression in this, I didn't think this policy was very well-written. I feel like I need to understand it better. I think raises a number of-- that I did not take the time to organize because of the time constraints that were communicated. But this one, you know, acceptable use is a complicated issue, I think, and it's something that we ought to, you know, understand well, I think, before we go forward. So that's my comment on this. Oh, on the, you know, August 19, I would say that, you know, from my point of view, unless there's a-- you know, we fell on our-- flat on our face last year regarding this. You know, unless there's a really compelling reason to have this in place before the school year starts, I frankly did not hear it, from my point of view. You know, I think, you know, especially since we had all spring in principle to do this, I don't see-- I don't see why. I'm not sure I would support it, reporting on these. I just--
The only thing that I would just add is that at the beginning of the year, all the kids signed an acceptable use policy. They-- the kids signed, so my only concern would be when I heard Chris talking about having it in place for the opening of the school year, that would be just the one thing that I would put out there. I'm not really sure what we would do about kids.
What do we do now for acceptable use?
This is not a new policy. None of these are new. They're just revisions.
Oh.
Just to be clear. And this one is a revision and a replacement of one, and renumbered to be in line with the existing policies to go in order.
Okay, so what's-- is all that's different, so it's just the--
The black line.
Just the red lines?
Just the red lines.
It's never clear on that, whether that's a revision from an earlier draft of a new policy, or whether that's--
Okay.
Yeah, I thought when Chris sent it around initially, it was clear that, well, I thought it was, that these are not new policies, these are revisions and replacements of others, you know, to be--
I was relying on the agenda, I think.
Oh, okay.
Maybe I didn't go back.
Okay. Do you feel differently, knowing that they're--
Well, let me give you--
Existing policies?
Yeah.
Of course, yeah.
I would say with you.
Not being asked to adopt them now?
It does change the, you know--
Concern about the--
Right.
The student expression policy--
Which was a new policy.
But, I mean, that also changes the comment that, you know, we do have a policy in place. So if we're just changing this policy, then, you know, the timing of the beginning of the school year isn't as important as if, you know, don't have it. So, I mean, if kids accept the acceptable use, I mean, all of the Code of Conduct, I mean, all of these policies, you know, we usually change them throughout the year. It's not like we--
But I think, but Robin, I think the point is that the acceptable use policy needs to be signed by the students, so we want them to sign the correct--
Her point's that it's all-- I mean, can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion? And now that we all understand that these are policies in place, and the revisions are shown, you know, I know the main revision frankly was the numbering of the policies to get them into the order of our policy manual. If, now that we know that the policies are already in place, if people could look at them in that context, and come back with anything substantive at the next meeting, because I think in light of that, there may not be substantive comments because of the changes that are being asked for. I mean, you know, if you're looking at the computer use policy, for instance, these are really cleanups.
And I'm sorry, I misspoke, just, and also, 12.5, the bring your own device--
Well, that's true, that's true, that's true. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
That is, that is a new policy, I misspoke, that should be in place, quite frankly, for the beginning of the year, because that's also a shift for teachers. So is that correct?
Yeah, and I mean, I would defer to, I guess, Bob, but I would say, we can't have kids sign something and then change it without them signing it again. So I guess, right?
Well, yeah, if, well, if, yeah. If you're going to change the policy, if you're going to change the policy, then you're going to have to have kids sign everything again.
Right.
But I think that only affects really the first one, the acceptable use.
Yes, right, yes.
That, I think, is the shortest, and really, the one that only had cleanups, so, you know.
Just glancing at that particular policy, I, it does, you know, I agree, it's just cleanups.
Right, right.
Doesn't seem like there's anything material there. I'd want another chance to read it carefully.
Sure.
But that does change my view of.
Okay.
Okay, and then, to be clear.
Leaving aside whether the policy, you know, we're comfortable with the policy as it stands, but I'm not hearing any, I don't know of any reason not to, but I do want to read it in a rush.
And Chris made a point about the field trip policy, that it's important to have that new policy in place, because teachers are actually planning their field trips and now have to request permission, and there's new protocols that are important. This, this actually governs teachers as much as anything.
Yeah, and with, with, with respect to the field trip policy, content is similar, but you'll see, language has expanded. Rationale for that is that we needed more detail, how the previous policy was written. It was written more in the form of a regulation. So the old policy kind of rolled more into the regulation, and we outlined the expectations that had been in place. Where we added additional safeguards is that we're looking for the board to authorize certain types of trips, where in the past, there hadn't been authorization, and my belief and that of council is that if we have kids that are going overseas, the board should be well aware of it and acknowledge that publicly. And we should also have some statement that more clearly governs non-school-sponsored trips, for example, kids that are going with community groups, and those groups trying to gain access to our children during school day or within the school environment. So there's some safeguards that we're putting in place, and I have to say, really, the timing for this grew out of experiences that have occurred this spring, when it came to our knowledge, that there are other groups that were actively trying to connect with school, children in our schools about going on their programs, not things that were being initiated by school district initiatives.
So I, I think, I think that that makes a lot of sense, and I know that, I was just, so, since people seen that Robin and I were talking, I know Robin had suggested this back when, when we ran into these issues, and it's good to see that these have been incorporated into the, into the policy, to have at least board oversight to, to deal with these things, and so I think it's good.
Yeah. Yeah, the big, the big trips, yeah, I mean.
I'm confused, well, Chris, are we talking about field trips now? But I'm confused about what's, what, I didn't understand what, what the issue was, is the issue that outside groups are doing what with their kids?
I believe that there was a comment made at some point during the year that, from Ms. Kerner, regarding the off-chance occurrence that outside groups could come in and talk to, and try to appeal to students to go on a field trip. That it was not a school sponsor, there's a school-sponsored field trips, and then there's non-school-sponsored field trips. I don't have any examples.
Field trips being defined as something done during.
For, for example, the trip to Nicaragua, that is coordinated by a teacher here, and there was a miscommunication, and parents thought it was being done through the school, and it's not.
Oh.
So there had to, we needed to clean up the policy and make sure that it's separate.
Okay. Can I ask just one other que, while we're on the subject? When it says international, does international, and I think, the difference between international and domestic is one of the timeframe for approval? Is that the only difference?
No, the, as policy currently sits, board only has to be notified when student, school-sponsored trips, when students are leaving the country. There is no board approval, and I think that is quite a liability and a huge experience for children, and I think it's important that the board meet, be made aware of those trips, understand the detail of the trips, and then authorize them in advance of the excursion being approved and planned.
But this would not be the case for a U.S. trip in the United States.
Not as it's spelled out there, I believe.
My follow-up question is, we're going to put Canada in the category of international for these purposes? You know, if you want to go to Montreal, you can go through.
Yep, I would believe.
Yeah, I would think so.
Is there a little silly?
You have to draw the line someplace.
Yeah, but it's also easy to draw it outside of the United States and Canada.
But I think from a matter of consistency, and it's a matter of discussion at this meeting, and one additional resolution for the purpose of that trip, I think it, it adds a layer of consistency and accountability for our employees, and from a board standpoint, you should be aware and comfortable when our kids are leaving the country. There's different sets of conditions they face when they're outside of the United States, whether that's legal, whether it's healthcare. We, I think we need to be aware of those potential consequences for our children and staff.
I agree with that.
I just have a question on the chaperone numbers. How did you guys arrive at those numbers?
They're numbers that have been in place for, since I've been in district, yeah, and they've been.
They're kind of spelled out lower, and then we moved it to where it made more sense.
Yeah, but I mean, did we ever take a look at them, and were comfortable with them?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's, they've been in place, I think we've talked about them. I want to say it was a few years back where they actually were adjusted. I think it's based on teacher feedback and principals feeling that that's what's manageable, and that's what a group can be managed in terms of how many adults you need. So I, I don't think there's been any question recently as to whether it's the right match or not, but it was, I'm going to say five or six, maybe my first year at Main Street School, I think we had a conversation, and I think it might have been adjusted at that point.
Oh nine, sounds right, so.
Oh six.
Six.
Was when I, so maybe it could have been oh.
Oh, six, oh nine, with the two years.
I don't remember either.
A lot of policy revisions.
But.
Oh, that board meeting.
But I'm saying, it's been reviewed even at the building level, to talk about whether that's an appropriate number to supervise children, which is obviously the bottom line, so.
And there haven't been problems as a result of those ratios?
No, and, and I think we've tried very hard, just as a side note, to, to really make sure that we're clear on what a chaperone is. So in other words, if a student has a one-to-one aide, that's not considered a chaperone, an additional adult would be there.
Oh.
Because that one-to-one aide is there for a purpose with a child, and so if that child needs support, what would happen to that person's group? So there's been, there's been quite a lot of conversation, and I think we feel pretty comfortable.
All right, are there any other comments on any of those policies? I realize we jumped around, I apologize for that at the moment. No?
Yes.
Yes.
So I was confused by the jumping around, sorry. The BYOD, my feeling is that the BYOD, the whole concept of bring your own device is just not a step that we should take lightly. I feel like it requires both public and, you know, serious board discussion of why we're doing this, whether it's a good idea. I don't think it's a trivial thing to start permitting this now, so I'm uncomfortable with doing this over the summer.
Okay?
You're comfortable.
Uncomfortable.
Uncomfortable.
You have plenty of time to do it before the summer. I think it's hardly necessary to do it now. You know, it's, it's just not, you know, I mean, the rest of the board feels they want to go ahead and do that, I obviously can't stop it, but I'm not comfortable.
What, is there a time period, John, that, so if we, if we delayed that one to our first board meeting in, in September, because essentially, what you're saying is that we don't want to adopt it in August, right? We don't want to adopt it even at our first board meeting, because then, of course, that's an adoption. So then our second board meeting in September is Aug, is September 20-something or rather?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, pardon me.
We just adopt the calendar, I think.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it all memorized, but I get, I'm just thinking practically, I was just thinking it through. What's the, what's the impact if we delay the BYOD policy until the second or third week of September?
I, I think it slows down the opportunities for teachers to integrate use of different technologies in their instruction and experiences that children may have. You know, operationally speaking, it doesn't have the same impact as acceptable use or field trips. But I, I would encourage you to organize your thoughts and concerns in advance. At a, you know, this is a public meeting, and I understand attendance typically is lower during the summer, but there is opportunity for public engagement, and I don't want us to shy away from important topics for any particular reason, and timing is what timing is sometimes, and I think we need to differentiate this experience and the timing of these policies from that of student expression topics that were discussed last summer. I think they're very, very different subjects, and they were tied to very, last summer was tied to very complex matters that I don't think are necessarily as involved to this subject. So I would be hesitant to say that we should automatically table it when we have two opportunities for discussion and education in the coming months.
But we don't have to table it now anyway, because there's nothing to table. May I suggest that we add this topic to our agenda next board meeting as a topic, not as much as a policy, but it sounds to me like John just would like to have a conversation about the advisability of bringing devices to school, and we can talk about the context of the bigger picture, right?
And I would say it's part of that, it would be helpful to hear the administration's thinking about how this will be implemented, and what the advantages of this, and what the possible concerns might be.
Right, you don't need, you don't feel we need another presentation, just a discussion, right?
Yeah, I'm also, yeah, I mean, I'm really hap, totally happy with the discussion. If they want to distribute a series of informal notes, then that would be nice, but it's, yeah. I think it's, you know, this is, to me, an important issue at the board.
Maybe just a simple discussion about the pros and cons. These are always pros.
Understanding the context and, and what our objectives would be.
Yeah, right, what do you hope to gain from this policy?
Okay.
What are your possible concerns, and how do you anticipate dealing with them? You know, and I think as part of the notice for that meeting, it should be clear in the notice that this is something we're going to discuss, you know, often.
Yep.
So the public is at least on notice, obviously. Well, in July, more people are going to be around in August, so.
I'm just saying, you make it cle, I missed something you said, because you said, you said to make it clear in the notice, but then you said often, and I didn't hear what the often remark was.
Well, I guess often, that, often these, these, we, some, some topics that the board discusses are emphasized in advance in this email. Some are not, and it's helpful that it's clear that this is one of the topics that we're going to discuss. People really care, I doubt anybody will show up, but.
We can even put it in our Facebook post, right?
Sure.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Is that satisfactory for the moment?
Yes.
We're not making the final decision, but at least we're adding that extra discussion in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other comments on any one of our policies? Again, apologies for the fact that they're out of order, or the discussion is meandering. All right, so at that point, because there's nothing to adopt, I'm going to move back to 12.7, which we pulled out of the consent agenda at John's request, and I presume, John, there's an edit that's required in the minutes?
I can, certainly, I just don't feel like this is an accurate, I don't think the minutes is written, or an accurate description of, certainly not my comments in this board meeting. So, you know, I think that, I think that's fairly evident.
Can I?
Nobody who, you know, it just can't be, so, I can't accept these minutes, so, I can communicate edits to Elaine, and we can.
Okay, so we're tabling the acceptance of the?
But I also think it's, it's easy to get my comments from the transcript, from the, from the video, too.
Which particular area are you talking about?
Well, I can communicate with you some.
Yes, we're tabling the acceptance of 12.7. And that brings us to 15.5, a discussion around the athletic trainer services award in RFP.
Yeah, I guess this was me, too. You know, I'm, I'm still of the opinion that we need a clearer discussion of, and this came up during the budget, of what the function, what, on the one hand, really, how we're doing concussion management and what the function of a trainer is. You know, I mean, this was originally pitched to us as first and foremost for the benefit of concussion management. This is not, you know, when you look at the proposal by the company when hiring, you know, what they put up front is the big thing they do, it's down there. I mean, they, they do it, but it's, it's, you know, all about, you know, the usual thing the trainers do instead. You know, and there is, I think, also a clear sense in this that, that the priority of these trainers is football team, and that also is not how it's sold to us. And so, you know, I, I just think that the rationale for athletic trainers has shifted. We have a lack of clarity about how we're dealing with concussion management generally. And, you know, I, you know, this is, this is, I think, a continuing issue for me.
So your recommendation is to not accept this tonight, today?
Yeah, I, well, again, I need to hear what the implications of that are. I understand that we need to get somebody on board, and maybe, maybe the decision should be to accept it, but, but make sure that we schedule some time to discuss really what we're doing on these issues.
Can I ask, because I, I don't know about the rest of, I, I'm clear on the need for it and why we're doing it, and I don't, I don't read this the way John reads it, so could I suggest that instead of having the entire board involved, if you have questions, that you schedule some time to, to speak with the administration on it? Because I don't, I don't, I mean, we have discussed it in public.
Why don't you explain it to me, then?
I, I don't, I, again.
You just want to agree with him, or you actually think you understand it in a way?
No, I do, I do think, I read it, I do think I understand it. I, I understand from our prior public meetings, when we talked about it, what the rationale is. I don't see anything in here that changes what we've already heard.
And what's the rationale?
The rationale is that we need someone to monitor our concussion policy and keep records regarding our children's concussion.
And is that, but that's not what we're approving.
It's, it's among the things we're approving, yes.
But we're also approving a lot of other stuff, and it doesn't seem to be, to be a well-focused, targeted effort at that. It's also much more focused on football in general.
Where does it say that?
Just so you know, it, this is, if I'm correct, this is the old and the new. So before, prior to this year, football was always covered. So this is including the old and the new, and the new, I mean, is.
You're talking about the RFP?
Yeah, the RFP.
Right.
The description. So we always had that coverage at the, at the varsity and JV level for football. That's not new. Is that what you're referring to?
Okay, so we're adding, so where are we adding then?
It's man-hours is essentially what we're adding. In the past, the limited hours that we had, it was primarily focused on football. Football is a priority, as are other contact sports such as lacrosse and soccer and basketball. We're increasing the, the volume of service, or the quantity of surface hours that we have available for all of our students. We have students that receive concussions in all of our sports. We have kids that have concussions in softball and basketball this year. We're talking about pre-treatment, examining injuries, communication with doctors, things that are spelled out in it. I do want to say that there were questions that were asked during the budget process, and I do believe that we prepared a document that then was shared with the board at that time, and there was no further question that came from the board. It continued in the proposal, at the will of the board, went to the voters, and was approved. We did our diligence based upon the information that was presented in public session, the document that was shared with the board with our overview, there were, since there were no further questions, those, that information from both of those media were then informed, the RFP that went out. Symmetry, which is the organization that we're recommending for appointment, provides similar services in numerous school districts in the area, has a great reputation, and references were checked and came back as favorable. We believe this is something that is critical for our students, as we said, going back during the budget process. I think it's important that we do have it in place, because we have to begin to make plans for fall preseason, which occurs in mid-August. So I think sooner that we have it in place, the sooner we're able to start to plan and make arrangements to make sure we're up and running when practices come about mid-August.
I mean, one of the biggest things is C, which is the whole impact and the concussion, you know, there is just not, I mean, ideally, every student in the school, not just the ones that play on a school team outside of school hours, but every kid here really should have one of these baselines, because if you don't have a baseline, and then you get an injury, unfortunately, you end up sometimes having to miss school a lot more than if this was in place.
Well, I completely know that, and I take it very seriously, I just haven't felt that it's been, you know, very clearly the focus.
John, I think the question before us is, since the was voted, the money was allocated to do this. to do this, and it was approved as part of the budget, now we're really talking about the RFP and the company that was chosen, and we're trying to approve them in order to ensure that those services are available for our athletes over the summer and get it going to the fall. So if we withhold that, then we're essentially not allowing the money to be spent because the company won't be signed. Is that what we want to do? And I, and I, for one, don't.
I don't think we do.
I don't want to do that. I mean, I understand your concern about the way the RFP was written. It does seem somewhat weighted to football and the language that was chosen. No, no criticism, but just football is specifically highlighted in the RFP.
And underweighted, you know, what we really thought is the important reason to spend the extra money.
Right. It just strikes me, though, that withholding the assignment of these services at this point is not, is not wise.
I agree with you on that.
So can we, can we approve it?
Unless anybody else has comments.
I just have a question about how it works. So they have a 30-hour work week. Who is responsible for kind of overseeing them? Who makes sure that, you know, their time is allocated correctly, that, you know, that if they're exceeding it, that we're aware they're exceeding it? Who's the point person for the trainer in the district?
It would work directly with the athletic director. We've already had conversation, and Mr. McCormick is in the process of developing the protocols where they're going to be assigned. There's, you'll see that, I think it's spelled out in the RFP, that there are logs for treatment of students to ensure that their time is being used wisely. And those timed logs are gonna be verified with the business office to make sure we're remaining within budget lines.
And are we doing baselines, then? Is there a plan to do it for every student?
Yeah, we're actually, yeah, we're actually going through a process that I've communicated along the way. We've been collaborating with a couple experts in the community on concussion management and head trauma, to try to come up with a strategy that we can expand the efforts from what we currently have today of using just, on a rotational basis, using a single tool. We're trying to come up with capacity where we would be able to utilize not only an athletic trainer through increased hours, utilizing our school physicians, but to also maybe have a wider array of resources that we'd be able to potentially someday, as Mrs. Cashkin suggested, test all of our students as they hit a certain benchmark in their schooling. But we do currently provide it on a rotating basis through the students' athletic experience throughout high school. But we're trying to come up with.
Is that middle school, sorry, middle school, too, or no?
Well, right now, already only really gets the baseline for the JV varsity more contact sports.
Which is defined as lacrosse, soccer, and football?
Um, I believe.
Lacrosse, soccer, football, and I think basketball was included in that. Wrestling?
Wrestling, I would think wrestling.
Yeah, I don't remember basketball. But things like softball, swimming, all the other sports, fencing, not.
Obviously, we have concern for all our students. The challenge is just the pure timing to be able to, one, do it, to be able to have a, not only to have all of our students screened, to make sure they're being screened by the most effective tools, because there's three or four key products that are out there on the market. And really, over the last two months, protocols have changed and guidance is changing in the industry, that they're saying you should have two different types of tests administered, which kind of changed the progress that we were, had underway. And then looking at having not testing done on a rotating basis, but done annually, if possible, for all of our student athletes.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would think that part of the reason we vote, we put this in the budget was, the number one priority was to get this done. And if we're still sort of, you know, not sure we're gonna do it or not sure how, it doesn't make me very comfortable.
John, they're two separate things, two separate things. The idea, the, John, you're not, you didn't hear what I said?
I did hear, I just don't, didn't, didn't hear, it does seem like we're not, I don't feel like you guys are sufficiently focused on this issue. It's my opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
I would, if, but can I make a suggestion, Bob's suggestion? I think, why don't you guys talk separately to see if you can, if there's, if there's a way that Chris can make you feel more comfortable with the work that's being done? Because he, because I don't think he has, he's gonna be able to satisfy you right now is the point.
Yeah.
All right? Or we can.
Yeah.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve 15.5, which is the, the contract with the Athletic Trainer Services Symmetry Physical Therapy?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, five, nothing.
Yeah, five, I voted yes.
Good. All right, so that completes all of our action items. We have comments from the community. Any comments from Martini? No? So we will move on to.
Chairs might have something to say.
To 17, and John, I'd like to recognize you now to complete your comments that you started at the outset when board officers were.
I think you heard it, I have no comments.
All right?
The comment was, well, the, I'll expand it.
Please, yeah.
The comment was that, you know, this is the configuration of the board and a lot of the way the board is running is not on a consensus, really, it's a one, two, three of you, you know, deciding what you want to do, how you want to do it. And that's fine, but, but, you know, you should be under no illusions of tension about that, and it's unfortunate.
I mean, I think it's a discussion that hopefully we'll continue to have. I think it's an ongoing discussion, which is, you know, clearly, a board operates by majority, but in, in, in the past, in other boards, you try to reach a consensus before you move to, to vote. And I guess, you know, I just, I would like to see a little bit more of that, and it does take a little time, but that's why I think, you know, it's helpful when you get everybody's opinion in one place at one time, and that's, I think, why the boards are set up this way. And on certain kind of important issues, I just, I would like to hopefully see us carving out a little bit of time to have those discussions and see if we could kind of better understand where we're all coming from, so maybe we can come to a better decision at the end this year. That's my feeling on that.
Very reasonable request. As your, as your board president, I'm committed to building as much consensus as we can possibly achieve.
That would be great.
All right, so our next public meeting is July 20th, July 29th, excuse me, at 6:30. It's an early start time.
6:30 a.m.?
6:30 a.m. Did I say a, no, the 6:30 a.m. would be, that's actually, that's good for me, perfect for me. And can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. You want to run it?
Yeah. Oh, we have to sign this.